Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the board meeting of the town of Newcastle. This is the September ninth twenty twenty five meeting. The board has been in executive session and I'd like to ask for motion to open the work session.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh Sabrina's going to start us off, we are going to have a presentation by one of our student interns, Asher Moss, and I will let Sabrina introduce her and her project.
Him.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Um well I-
Asher, sorry.
I'm just saying, I just wanna start by thanking the town board for allowing my office to have interns each summer. We find them very helpful in helping us meet our goals with our programs and we provide great experience for them. This summer, I had a very special intern, Asher Moss, who is here tonight. He came to us out of a pool of, I think, nine applicants we interviewed. We selected him based on his communication skills and his interest. He rose to the top quickly. And his work with my office this summer has proven that. And he's here tonight to share with you what he has done. And um the work that he performed this summer is assisting the town with meeting its requirements under our general stormwater permit, so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Asher.
Um thank you Sabrina for the introduction, um and thank you guys for being here. Um as Sabrina said, I was an intern um with the planning department this past summer and mostly focusing on data analytics as well as policy and strategy. And I wanna take the opportunity to highlight some of the projects I worked on. Okay, um so on the screen are the five primary assignments that I worked on throughout the six weeks. And I wanna briefly present each project as well as detail some of my work and findings for each one. So starting with the MS four septic identification and record digitization project. So based on updates to the There we go, okay. Based on updates to state MS four regulations and the proposed updates to the town code, which I helped to draft, the town is now required to collect as much data as possible on the waste management system of the roughly eighteen hundred parcels in the Sawmill Sewer District. So this means determining whether all eighteen hundred parcels utilize sewer, septic, or communal waste management systems. Up to this point, at least four distinct efforts have been made to obtain this information through a mailer. Those mailers were sent out with one prepaid postcard where residents could indicate the waste management system on their property. Those efforts yielded about thirteen hundred confirmed records, which is about seventy percent of the total that we need to be in full compliance. When I was brought onboard, I was tasked both with digitizing the thirteen hundred existing records we had as well as capturing as much of the remaining thirty percent as possible. So along with Sabrina, we began a targeted mailer effort. This was unique in that the mailer was designed, one for property managers and a separate one for residents, and it was also stamped and written to elicit as many responses as possible. We were happy to observe a return rate of thirty five percent, which is over five times the average that would be expected for a mailer of this type. Um additionally, working with Felicia and Sabrina, I reviewed digital records on various town databases, which further increased verified coverage. So in our effort, we were able to increase the verification rate from seventy percent to eighty five percent, um which comprises two hundred and eighty eight new verifications, which uh I think is pretty significant. So next, I will turn to the municipal energy benchmarking. So every intern that works in the planning department completes the municipal energy benchmarking report through the EPA's Energy Star Portfolio Manager. This report quantifies all town building energy and carbon emission data um relative to square footage of the building. As part of my review specifically, I examined and corrected any errors from prior years, two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty three, and ensured that all past data was accurate. So this image on the screen um is the report for two thousand and twenty four, the final report. And as you can see, we did highlight CHAP PAC because we observed that it was using greater amounts of energy than might be expected relative to its size. With this information in mind, I resolved to launch an investigation into the factors that contribute to CHAP PAC's monthly energy bills. So that led to the CHAP PAC energy investigation and subsequent analysis. So a large portion of the CHAP PAC investigation was conducted onsite. Um I was fortunate enough to make three separate visits to CHAP PAC, uh two of them with DPW Building Maintenance Foreman Walter Quast. And through these tours, Walter walked me through each major draw in electricity in the building. So first is the air handler. So the air handler, as pictured on the screen, um likely consumes large amounts of electricity due to its frequent operation. Additionally, we have two hot water circulator pumps that operate twenty four seven during the shoulder months of September and October and March and April, and those also likely add to our monthly bill. Additionally, there are air conditioning units that are likely beyond their expected lifespan. Um the two air conditioning units in the auditorium are twenty plus years old, but the average lifespan of an air conditioning unit is only fifteen to twenty years. That being said, the town has taken numerous very significant steps to address high energy usage in CHAP PAC. Those include the installation of LED lights and solar panels, as well as a replacement of the boiler and the integration of a building management system. Those projects, along with many other additional capital projects, are all excellent initiatives that will surely reduce energy use this year and in many years to come. So the flagship project of my internship and what I hope will be my legacy here at the town is the B hashtag stormwater smart campaign, um which is a label that encompasses all the proposed and new public facing initiatives, most of them are legally required, that the town um will start to take to reduce stormwater pollution. So first, uh I wanna provide some background as to why we decided to begin this effort. Um so in January two thousand and twenty four, the New York State DEC issued a new MS four general permit, which applies to the town of Newcastle. And that requires that public education, it requires that we educate the public and provide outreach materials on pollutant generating activities and ways that we can reduce runoff as a town, stormwater runoff. Um this outreach must target various focus groups. So we have identified three such focus groups as the primary ones in the town. And those are residents, contractors, and high priority businesses. HPBs are businesses with the highest propensity to pollute stormwater, but I will discuss more of that later uh in that section of the presentation. Finally, we must have a special focus on phosphorus pollution reduction due to our location in the east of Hudson Watership. Our goal, my goal, Sabrina's goal, um and everyone's goal with this project is to protect our drinking water, um protect aquatic ecosystems, and most importantly, comply with all permit requirements. So the first target group of the B hashtag stormwater smart campaign is homeowners. Through many widespread habits, um like is included in this graphic here, so for example, leaving pet waste on the street, washing cars in driveways, or allowing sprinklers to be aimed at the road, um homeowners are the largest collective contributors to stormwater contamination every year. All year, all year long, every season, homeowners have multiple habits that pollute our stormwater and thus our wetlands, waterways, and reservoirs. So in the handouts that were um handed out to you all before the meeting, there are instructions to access twenty seven unique graphics for all seasons of the year, and fourteen of these I designed myself with assistance from artificial intelligence. Each graphic set, which is two different graphics, contain one common harmful practice and one sustainable practice. So for example, sprinklers. So on the left, you have graphic A, the first graphic of the set, which clearly illustrates that pointing your sprinklers towards the road or the sidewalk is both um pollutant generating and harmful to stormwater and also can waste um money on water. On the right, we have graphic B, which is aimed to inform residents of a sustainable practice, which is quite simply, in this example, just directing sprinklers toward landscaping. Um our approach aims to integrate these graphic sets of these sets of two graphics into two separate town messaging platforms. So the first is our proposal for a B hashtag stormwater smart section in the supervisor's weekly e-newsletter. We envision this being posted as needed at the town board's discretion, but perhaps every three to four weeks. As you can see, each post would contain one set, so both the harmful practice and the sustainable practice, as well as a caption that can be tweaked um to basically illustrate some information about the, you know, both practices and what residents in the town can do to, to, you know, pollute less stormwater. Um the second integration model is monthly social media posts. So these sets would be posted together, again, these are models of how it may look. Um our goal with this is quite simple, it's clear messaging, we want engaging graphics and concise and succinct messaging, which is in this case, the caption that lends itself towards conversation and comment and ultimately action on the part of the homeowner. So that is sort of the background on the homeowner section of the campaign. The next stage of B hashtag stormwater smart includes outreach to contractors and the homeowners that employ them. So for common ongoing town projects, so that ranges from installing a fence to installing a pool or a patio or building a shed, there are certain construction activities like earth moving, concrete washout, excess use of oil and paint that all pose major stormwater pollution risks. And building and engineering inspects every single site before giving out a building permit. Um for select sites that are, you know, five hundred square feet and larger or one acre and larger, weekly inspections are required, however, this comprises a relatively small group of sites. And what happens is that smaller sites often fall through the cracks, which is to say that contractors, despite passing first inspection, they do not adequately, you know, keep their stormwater controls in place after the initial inspection. So our initiative is aimed to provide, is effectively providing information packets to these contractors with the goal of encouraging compliance and reducing pollution in a way that is not solely enforcement driven. So these information packets will be distributed alongside building permits. Um the contractors will receive one so that they are fully aware of their requirements, so that would be through the town letter and through the construction site requirements list, as well as the steps that they must take to stay in compliance. So that is the compliance log and the BMP, that's best management practice graphics that are printed in both English and Spanish. Homeowners will, will receive a smaller but similar information packet that informs them of their requirements and that they are ultimately responsible for all activity on their property. So to just highlight these graphics for reference, on the left, we have the graphic that would be sent out to construction sites. So as you can see, relatively easy to read, um branded for the town and the B hashtag stormwater smart campaign and is, you know, pretty much boiling it down to four best management practices and very similar for the uh resident graphic. However, that one talks a little bit more about calling or reporting if you see that somebody is not conforming to their stormwater requirements. Um I, lastly, I wanna highlight just with the contractor information packet is the compliance log. So the compliance log is designed so that contractors can continuously certify that they are complying with all town requirements that are already set out. Um town inspectors can then, upon arrival at the site, they just request the log and then they can verify, um they can verify that the supervising contractor has signed off on, you know, continuous compliance with all stormwater requirements. So this enforcement method, the compliance log, is designed to minimize personnel requirements, but still, oh, I'm sorry, but still ensure accountability. I have spoken at length with Terry Rowe, who is our civil engineering technician for the town and who I believe is the primary uh inspector, and he vouches for both the viability and effectiveness of this proposal. So lastly, I want to hit on um the final phase of B hashtag stormwater smart, and that focuses on the high priority businesses, which as I said before, are local or local operating establishments that are most likely to contribute to stormwater pollution. So we have identified twenty seven of these in the town that fall into one of five categories. Those are restaurants, landscapers, auto repair shops, gas stations, and car washes. So our challenge here um is that high priority businesses are less likely to respond to environmental guidance and social media posts than uh homeowners might. So we need a strategy that sort of targets what businesses are actually going to respond to, which is their, predominantly their reputation in the town, their customer perception, and their profits. So the solution that, you know, Sabrina and I put forth is gamification. We, we choose the gamification model. And uh for those that aren't familiar, that effectively takes game-like elements, so you know, recognition, rewards, checklist, stuff like that, to boost what is voluntary compliance with the program. So this has been proven effective in multiple modern studies. Um in government information quarterly participation, they found that participation increases up to twenty five percent when recognition and rewards are added. And the Environmental Protection Agency calls recognition a quote low-cost, high-impact strategy specifically effective for stormwater. So in order to better illustrate how we envision this program being designed, I will walk you through a model using Le Jardin, which is a, as I'm sure everyone knows, a local French restaurant right down the street. So the HPB, in this case, Le Jardin, would receive a flyer, like the one to the left, that is specific to their industry. So in this case, a restaurant. Um it's a little small, but on the top, you have just a layout of the program and sort of what the town is doing. And then on the majority of the flyer is the four best management practices that are specific to the restaurant. So we have putting waste in a bin, avoiding overflows, keeping a lid on outdoor waste, and wiping up chemical spills and oil and grease and stuff like that. So Le Jardin would need to complete all four of these best management practices. So in their case, maybe they're already doing two out of four of these, um but perhaps the outdoor dumpster doesn't have a lid on it, right? So when it rains, as it did just last weekend, waste and stuff would be flushed right into the stormwater drain. So Le Jardin would need to address that best management practice and ensure that outdoor waste is covered with a lid. Um Le Jardin would then want to complete, in online form of which this is solely a model, um this is not live on the website or anything like that, um which would certify that they are conforming to all four best management practices for their industry. Um our proposal does require businesses to submit photographic proof of their compliance. And then a town employee would need to verify, you know, that the photos support that they are in compliance. Once that verification happens, Le Jardin would be certified as a B hashtag stormwater smart business for the town of which this is, you know, a, just a little thing I designed that, that could go along with that certification. Um after that, the town would want to grant any one or multiple of the rewards that we proposed. So that can include a feature on town Instagram, such as the one presented here, which effectively is not an endorsement of any kind, it's just to say, this is a business that we wanna recognize for helping keeping Newcastle's water clean and our community safe. Um we also propose potentially an integration into the uh B hashtag stormwater smart section of the weekly e-newsletter or a certificate, like something like this, that could be displayed um on a window or within the restaurant or, you know, wherever a business might wanna display it. Um and there are models for all of these that were included in the, in the packet you received. So recognizing that gamification and this whole model is a little bit out of the box, I wanna conclude this section by just reinforcing sort of why we believe this to be the best strategy. Um first of all, it is low to no cost to implement and requires no additional personnel, with the exception of one to two individuals to review applications on the form. Um and to support the scalability of the model, so that is to say, to push it out to all HPBs, um I wanna briefly discuss a proven behavioral science principle. So our model is scalable because it builds on the principle of nudge theory, which is basically to say that people and businesses are more likely to take action even without direct incentives, so that is to say a carrot or a stick, um when they see that their peers are doing the same thing. So as more businesses seek this stormwater smart certification, participation hopefully will become the perceived norm, which would in turn, you know, like nudge other businesses to do it as well. Gamification, so the rewards, would then reinforce this behavior by giving businesses a reason to sustain, beyond just seek, but sustain their effort. So ongoing recognition, visibility, and pride in being part of a high standard B stormwater smart community. Um and finally, the program aligns with business interests to maintain positive relations with their clients and with town authorities. So I wanna wrap up the presentation by discussing the, briefly the fifth project, which was the content overhaul of the B hashtag stormwater smart webpage on the town's website. So in alignment with our required and expanded public outreach efforts under the B hashtag stormwater smart campaign, I um am proposing a full, along with Sabrina, proposing a full content overhaul for the stormwater section of the town's website. This new proposed version is more user friendly, it is more visually structured, and it is targeted at increasing public engagement and education. But most importantly, it aligns with all updated permit requirements, specifically our new requirement to include language on illicit discharges and phosphorus production, which I mentioned before. So here are the major section categories of the proposed website. As you can see, it's much more fleshed out, much more organized, um and we believe much more, you know, conducive to public use. Um and before wrapping up, I do want to get into just a very brief comparison. So on the left, you can see the current website. Um it's pretty small, but, but the actual words are less relevant than to just say that this website is not currently in compliance with permit requirements. Um our proposal on the right, which is simply an outline at this point, but it is cleaner, is more effective at conveying information, and it brings the town into compliance with permit requirements. And so we urge the town to adopt part or all of this proposed outline. Um so that wraps up my um my internship this summer. I just, I wanna take the opportunity to thank Sabrina, who gave me both the opportunity to work for the town and also the opportunity to present in front of you guys. Um it, it's been an honor to work for the town and to present just now and um yeah, so thank you.
Asher, I am amazed and so impressed. You have done fantastic work for us and I thank you so very much. I mean, your work answered real problems and gave us some real actionable solutions. Um I'm thrilled to have something to put in the newsletter on this. The graphics are terrific, they're attractive, they're engaging. Um I love the gamification idea, just reminds me, you know, the concept, everything old is new again. All of the concepts of gamification are tried and true, but I love the word gamification. So we're going to use all of that and um I, I think it's fantastic. Thank you for helping us with our webpage. And um what I love the most is that I can see that you really enjoyed this.
I did.
Right, you know, and the excitement is there. And um you know, you have made stormwater awareness something fun, so thank you for that. Um does anyone have any comments or questions?
I, I would, I would just add that you've lost me at stormwater, generally speaking. You know, it's not the most exciting, compelling thing. But, but you made it very interesting and substantive and brief, and you articulated incredibly well, and I kept on leaning over and looking at Jen over, I'm like, oh my gosh, like what's, what's going on? It was really impressive, I mean, the way you presented, the way you present yourself and you presented the information was compelling and substantive and terrific. So two thumbs up, Sabrina, watch out, he's coming.
Yeah, you, you took a fairly boring yet complicated topic and broke it down into very understandable, user-friendly, and very presentable um chunks. I, kudos to you, and you presented it phenomenally, so you're gonna go on to do really good things. Thank you for sharing yourself with us.
My, my pleasure.
I, I also wanted to make a comment. First of all, wow, uh I mean, that was just amazing. I can't believe how much you accomplished in a summer. And I can't believe how clearly and succinctly you presented it to us with a lot of confidence. I mean, you compare easily to other people who have come before us from different companies in Westchester who've been doing that work for decades. And you did this in a summer, um same kind of confidence, same clarity, so really amazing. I'm specifically interested in CHAP PAC. Um and I'm curious, when you did the comparisons that showed that CHAP PAC, given the structure it is, is using more of its utilities or power, um were you comparing it to like use structures, like theaters? Or just structures of similar size?
No, that's a good question, and thank you for the comments you made before. Um we were comparing it to similar performing arts centers. Um what I will add and what is a flaw with the Energy Star portfolio system is that their numbers are calculated on square footage. So CHAP PAC, as I'm sure you all know, is very tall, it's, it is enormous um height there.
Hmm.
And the, our numbers, just the way the system works, does not take into account volume, it's solely square footage.
Hmm.
So I, part of the reason I think we are seeing the numbers we see is not actually because energy usage is that high, but mostly because the platform we use is not taking into account that CHAP PAC probably has higher ceilings than comparable buildings.
Right, I was thinking that heating and cooling, that wide open space, that is the feeling, right?
Exactly, yes, yes.
But anyway, it was just fascinating. I'm going to not leave my dog's poop on the ground anymore. Um I learned a lot from your presentation, thank you.
Well, I just wanna conclude by saying thank you so much for the work that you did over the summer. We are all completely just beyond impressed. I, like Jeremy, kept looking at Sabrina, like wow, is this real? MS four has been weighing on us as a board and as town staff since, since we learned that we were ha, going to have to make all of these changes. And for you to come in and do the kind of work that you did for the, for us for the summer, I can't understa, I, I can't overstate how appreciative we all are for the work that you did. That was so impressive, it was informative, it was easy to understand, it was educational. I, I thought it was interesting too, which like to your point, I've never thought anything about MS four was interesting.
It was stormwater.
And the best part was watching your mom.
Yeah, I agree. Congratulations.
I even got a little teary-eyed.
You should be really impressed.
Mom is happy too.
That proud mom moment.
Leaving me in like five days.
Thank you.
Yes, very proud.
Yeah.
Well, thank you all for, for everything you said and yeah, it's, it's, it's been an honor, it's been a pleasure to work with the town and um look, if I have any friends, like I will definitely send them your way.
So Asher, what are you doing um this year?
Well, I'm, I'm going to my sophomore year uh at Northwestern, so
Okay.
Oh.
You know, um I'm an economics major, hoping to get approval to double minor in statistics and data science.
Okay, well, I can see how you would do really well there.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
So that should be, should be good.
Congrats. So best wishes for a great sophomore year.
Thank you. Thank you.
You give us hope for the future.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. It would really, it was a pleasure and thank you all for taking time.
We hope to hear from you again one day soon.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Will do.
And once he has that um statistics and come analyze the results again.
And good job, mom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. And it's okay if you don't stay for the whole meeting, but you're very, you're very welcome.
You can leave, you don't have to stay.
Well, you have a chance.
You're very, you're very welcome.
And now's the chance to go out.
Welcome, my pleasure, alright.
Um.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great semester.
Sabrina.
I'm gonna walk you out.
Oh, okay.
That's good.
So since we're running late, Rob, I'd like to take something out of order because it, it took us a while to start with the work session and we have um
That was really impressive.
Um our chair of the airport advisory board to present a resolution in support of the intermunicipal airport master plan task force recommendations. Um thank you for waiting, um and I know you expected to present on seven o'clock.
No worries, I cleared my, my calendar to be here.
You knew, you know what happens, you know what goes on here. So um alright, so thank you for, for being here and presenting to us.
So yeah, so on behalf of the intermunicipal airport master plan task force, which is a group of seven communities, Newcastle plus six other local communities, uh we've put together a resolution that we're asking each of our town boards to pass, which is specifically looking um to address the master plan process that's going on right now at Westchester County. So very specifically, um back in twenty twenty or so, the previous um uh repres, but um what was he? Who was the head guy?
Chair.
The, um
Um
Ralph Fleischer?
Like Ralph, Ralph Fleischer.
No, sorry.
Latimer?
Latimer, there we go.
Oh, George, oh George Latimer, that, that head guy.
I, I kicked off, I, I, I'm an executive, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
You're not Ralph Fleischer.
I kicked off the, the master plan update process, it got delayed. And so this was done last in nineteen eighty seven, setting out sort of the airport, the growth, updating buildings, all of that. So it's been a while. Um and then very specifically, right now, Ken Jenkins is the new county executive. So what we're looking to do is really put this resolution out now to the county, the new um uh county executive, and really setting forth our, one, you know, recognition of the benefits of the airport, right? It's convenient, it's close by, but also our But also our concerns, right? Sort of, we live within the flight path, we hear the noise, issues of pollution, air pollution, water pollution. Um, so what we've done in this resolution is put forth many of our key concerns across um, one, airport modernization. So, this is something specifically Ken Jenkins has talked about. So, right, making a more convenient airport, which is both good, but at the same time recognizing that the county has set forth, there are very strict limits on not growing the footprint of the airport, limiting the number of passengers to the terminal. So, we wanna make sure those issues are recognized as well as concerns about noise, um, the different airlines, different type of airplanes flying at the airport, water pollution, all of that stuff. I can take a pause there if you have any questions. Otherwise, I can keep going, whatever, whatever makes sense.
You can keep going.
Um, yeah, go ahead, keep going.
So, yeah, and so I guess the other thing is sort of important right now, there's been a whole lot going on at the airport. So, there's a master plan. I was last here a year ago with the terminal use agreement, um, which would restrict and it was re-approved at the beginning of this year, maintaining that only two hundred forty passengers per half hour can in-plane, deplane. Um, so puts those strict limits in place. So, that happened. But there's this airport modernization, um, RFP, that there was recently news stories about. Very sort of cryptic what that means. Sort of, um, the legislature hasn't said what's gonna be there. Um, so we're monitoring that. And then the county just lost a lawsuit a couple of weeks ago. Um, so there's very strict limits on any airline selling seats for more than nine passengers. Um, had strict limits, they couldn't do it. County just lost that. And so, and then it just withdrew um, an appeal of that lawsuit. So, potentially, a lot of these smaller airlines like Blade and J S X can start flying out of the private terminals uh, at Westchester Airport, which potentially bring no more noise and get around the strict limits on the terminal use agreement. So, sort of all this stuff going on right now. Um, and so, yeah, so this resolution is just trying to put forth sort of our sort of key concerns that we've uh, laid out here, as well as we've prepared papers, um, research papers behind these topics in terms of what the issues are.
Um, Greg, have they established what the groundwater issues are specifically?
So, there's issues of PFAS. Because there's a firefighting foam, uh, which contains PFAS, they've tested and found PFAS in the water. Um, so, yeah, so monitoring that, also making sure that that doesn't migrate out into the the reservoirs, particularly issues of stormwater, right? If you have climate change, more extreme weather, um, being, make sure that is being treated, taken care of properly and potentially remediated.
And do you know, and I know you don't necessarily have all of these answers, but do you know what their mitigation um, factors are?
For?
How are they mitigating?
I I I don't know.
The the PFAS, yeah, I mean.
I I I think for right now, they're just monitoring, from what I'm aware of. Um, but yeah.
I mean, I would, is there any way we can get data on that?
I can, I can look into it.
I really wonder what what that would show, you know, what the increase in the in the PFAS runoff would show and where it goes and how they plan to mitigate that?
Yep, yeah.
That 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 is a big issue.
No, definitely.
It's huge.
Yes.
Especially in the state. I mean, the state is creating even stricter laws around that.
Right.
So, you would think that the airport would be held accountable.
I, they should be, yeah.
Should be on the D E C Brownfield site perhaps as well.
It 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 really, you know, it's 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 astounding. It really is. Um.
And just wanna introduce Eric, who's part of Newcastle Airport Advisory Board as well.
Sorry.
Yes, hello Eric, welcome.
Hi.
Hi there.
Thank you.
Welcome. Um, so, I you know, I I've read through the resolution and you're basically going through all of the, all of the different issues that we're concerned about.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the point is that as these um, improvements for uh, usage for, uh, how do they, how do they term term their goals? That just passenger, passenger comfort, you know, passenger efficiency or?
In terms of passenger restrictions on terminal use or modernization?
Right, I mean, how how are they describing what what these changes to the airport?
So, they haven't. And so, and that's sort of the thing that's been, um, I guess, in that we're monitoring. They haven't said what that means. Is it something very simple, like a fresh coat of paint? Or are they gonna sort of, you know, find ways to squeeze more passengers, right? Cause so actually, important to note is the terminal use agreement restricts it. But there's about a hundred days of exception around holidays, spring break, Christmas, Thanksgiving, whatever else. And then it's a free-for-all, so you can have a gajillion people theoretically through the airport.
And since the lawsuit, the county lost the lawsuits, another workaround.
Exactly, yeah. So, you can have these small Blade and J S X type. Um, and so, yeah, so.
There's some of the worst.
What?
Which are often the worst. There's, because there's already a lot of them now.
Yeah.
Yeah, and sort of, obviously, and I think one of the things is, you know, look at the private jets. Obviously, it's not as big as a big commercial airline, but it's much louder than a smaller plane, all else being equal. That's the kind of thing I think you can, you hear over your house. And so, it's important to note about eighty percent of the flights are private jet-sized aircraft.
Greg, is in the resolution, is one of the efforts to?
Um, Eric, uh, come up to the microphone. I mean, you're welcome to, because people won't hear what you're saying, yeah.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, we want to, everybody wants to hear.
Ah, I see, sorry.
Yeah, I'm, we're not trying to make you uncomfortable, just, yeah.
So, I was just gonna chime in and ask Greg a question that was uh, regarding, appointing the resolution that my um, that spoke to the PFAS chemicals. And I think I was gonna ask you perhaps is that, uh, try, they're, we're trying to establish that cap uh, conditions like that be rolled into the site plan approval process for any new developments in the master plan. Um, and any uh, RFP proposed development uh, to get it formally onto uh, the environmental site analysis, um, register of the site, rather than just monitoring it. Ho- hold them accountable essentially for mitigating that or dealing with it or understanding what it means for proposed expansion, uh, hopefully not expansion, but profo- proposed uh, improvements.
Yeah.
Um, and to safeguard the site, not only the site, but the reservoir and surrounding. So, I was just wondering if that is an official uh, part of the resolution.
Yeah, so it it is, yeah, exactly, to to monitor and and make sure um, any changes, any modernizations takes into account all the different environmental impacts of PFAS water, air pollution and all of that.
So, I have a question for you. I'm not entirely clear. Of course, there's the master plan, but is this goal of improving the passenger experience something in addition to that, that they're going to be doing separately before completing the master plan?
Yes, so um, yeah, so Ken Jenkins has has said that he wants to modernize the airport. And there was recently a low-hud article that there is an RFP in process. Um, and the airport has confirmed that they are working on an RFP, but because it's in process, they can't say what's in it.
Okay, so unrelated to the master plan?
Unrelated to it, they're they're modernizing, whatever that means.
I read something also about um, the parking um, issue and more public transportation as as like a goal.
Yes.
Um, would that impact Newcastle? I mean, might there be public transportation from Newcastle downtown to the airport?
I mean, we we've asked the the county to consider it. Um, so, yeah, so maybe theoretically. Um, but yeah, and that's one of the things, I think particularly some of the communities that are closer, they're worried about the traffic, um, cars cutting through and and all of that. So, yeah, so that's one of the the recommendations here is to consider public transportation options.
Okay, so um, the resolution is really thorough.
Yes.
It really names all of the issues that we could.
Yeah, so it was fourteen of us of the last year or so fighting over it.
You've done a great job in it, and it's a, it's a really good, um.
Good job fighting over it.
It was back and forth and, you know, you try to get it all there. And then.
Fourteen?
Collaboration, not fight.
Collaboration, yes.
This is collaboration. Um.
And then a lot of last-minute changes with this lawsuit happening.
Did you consider bringing Asher on to help you?
You might now.
Asher, good, Asher. Yeah. So, this is a really good roadmap as to
Yeah.
what we need from from the airport and and what goes into the master plan and what can's implement.
Yeah, and and ultimately, really just show that we're paying attention. All the communities are watching what's going on.
So, thank you so much. Yeah, your your committee's doing really great work. Um, very substantive, uh, very clearly delineated here. And um, I I'm really very grateful for this. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so, we will be voting on this.
Okay, thank you very much.
Today.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And supporting.
And so, yes, I don't wanna get ahead, but I'm assuming, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, um, Rob, do you want to um, discuss the RFQ for the CHAP line design and construction inspection consultants?
Yep, so uh, we just wanted to update the community tonight, kinda where we are on the CHAP line. I think everyone's heard about this project for many years. Uh, we were able to announce earlier this year the grant funding of the TAP funding, uh, federal grant that's locally administered by New York State. Um, so, as part of that process, the next step in the process was to select a uh, design consultant. And uh, we're here to name that consultant tonight. So, just to talk a little bit about the process, um, we issued RFQs, uh, re- requests for qualifications uh, to uh, nineteen vendors off, what was the list? It's a local.
It's the local, um, the the local state design assistance contract. There's a whole pros-
Hang on.
Oh, yes, you have to come to the microphone.
I know. Um, the state has a local design assistance list. If you're a vendor or a contractor, you have to apply to be put on this list. It's an abbreviated process. So, rather than going out for an RFP where we would let an RFP, we would receive bids and we'd go through that process, we were able to just send our project, if you will, to the list of nineteen,
Nineteen.
nineteen companies that were approved in our region to do work by New York State DOT under this grant, under the TAP grant. Um, so we narrowed it down. You can take it from there.
Yep, so we narrowed it, we had four uh, responses. Uh, we had a a committee in town of staff consultants. Um, and we narrowed it down to four, or we had four responses. We narrowed it down to two. We had uh, in-person interviews with each of those uh, entities. And ultimately, we selected Barton Le Judas, uh, Don Fletcher's here this evening. Um, so, we selected Barton Le Judas. The the four firms were really um, all qualified. They had a really impressive resume of different uh, projects, very similar to what we're looking for. They all had experience administering federal grants, uh, state grants, et cetera. Um, what really set Barton Le Judas apart was the fact that they had performed the feasibility study for us. Um, they helped us supply for the grant, um, several grants over the years. And they just really knew this project really well. I think we went uh, back several years ago, went trudging through the brush there. And she's actually walked the the proposed trail and and they're just really familiar with that. And they were involved in some of the earlier uh, public engagement sessions that we had. We had targeted sessions with uh, residents that were um, in areas that'll be close to this, close to the trail. Uh, and they, we did some full public meetings with this. So, uh, we really felt like that set them apart. So, um, uh, Don and then I think Dan was online uh, in the executive session. So, they kinda walked us through the timeline and what the next steps look like. So, we're going to uh, appoint them this evening as the design consultant. And uh, they're gonna hit the ground running. So, um, they're gonna take advantage of the remaining time left in the fall here. They'll start with uh, surveying and kinda wet lens delineation of the site. And then they'll get into their uh, design work. So, um, they give us a timeline tonight, uh, very conservative timeline. Uh, they expect the entire design process and to be able to name a uh, uh, go out to bid and then name a um, construction company. And we expect that to take two years from this point, to be able to uh, finally put a shovel in the ground. And we're really hoping much sooner, but there's some variables that come into play. There's a significant amount of permitting, there's some uh, environmentally sensitive lands that we need to be aware of and and to design around and to design some boardwalks. So, um, they've given us that timeline. Uh, we talked tonight about some uh, how to make the community more aware. We're gonna set up a website that's gonna keep everyone updated. We'll have public meetings with the consultant, both targeted and to the uh, full town. And uh, that's gonna get us uh, started. We hope that throughout this process, once we have the final design for this, that that will help us to secure more funding for the project.
Okay, thank you, Rob. I'm I'm very confident in presenting B N L as our consultant. Uh, they've had, um, they have very close and detailed knowledge of the site, having done the feasibility study. Um, they know our community very well, and that counts for a lot. And and they have their more than, they have more than the expertise we need to, you know, of of course, they have the engineering expertise, but they also have expertise in um, in environmental areas. They have people who are, you know, trained environmentalists as well. And I thought that set them apart. Um, so, I'm very grateful that we have a a solid plan and a solid timeline to look at going forward. And I look forward to um, approving the contract.
And the community may remember, they did the work.
Not, no, not tonight. I I'm sorry, but um, we're not approving it.
We are tonight. We're a- approving the appointment. So, the final details, uh, it'll be subject to the attorney's, uh,
Oh, we met, okay, go ahead. Oh, okay. I thought we were tabling based on outstanding issues, but we're keeping it on.
With just some very fine details. No, Lino was, yeah, we're keeping it on to approve tonight. Yeah, because we we do want them to get started.
Okay, okay.
We're really, a lot of the details in the contract, so the very first part of the contract are all state DOT specifications, that there's not a a lot of leeway.
So, these are small, small issues.
Yep, and so, we've worked with, I think Sabrina had one minor comment from what they had given us tonight.
Okay.
And then, and that won't be a roadblock, so uh.
Okay, so I misunderstood that. Okay, good.
Yep, no, so Lino, Lino is is uh, good to go ahead. And uh, community may remember also, Barton Le Judas did the work on the playground and the basketball court for us. They designed that uh, and did all the construction management there. That project uh, came in on time and under budget. And uh, we're looking forward to this one doing the same.
Right, okay, great. Um, any que- any questions for Rob?
No.
Okay, thanks, Rob.
Alright, um, and now we are going to the Route one twenty pedestrian bridge and duck pond bridge.
Update.
Sorry, this is a little redundant here, but the uh, duck pond bridge update.
It's a little, yeah.
Um, and and we've had a lot of concerns from residents. We've heard from them. Um, I I'll let you get started.
Yeah, we we have. And so, we we have Jeff Gaspar, the town engineer here tonight, that's been uh, kinda stepped in, I guess, in the middle or the later stages of the project right now. Um, you know, we had some difficulties in the beginning. We had it designed and went out to bid. And and we had some issues. The little bidder at the time ended up rescinding his bid because they were unable, they realized after submitting the bid, they were unable to complete the project uh, for the bid. And then the other two bidders at the time didn't have any experience doing this type of project. So, ultimately, we rejected those bids, went out to bid again, uh, or sorry, not yet. But we've we've asked um, Tectonic, the designer, to kinda refine the bid specs and maybe uh, hopefully get some better um, responses. And I'll leave it there for Jeff to to tell you where we are right now.
Sure, so let me, let me start with the good news, is that uh, we actually received from Tectonic today, uh, this afternoon, the bid package that we can put out on on bid and how we how we advertise our bid. So, that's actually, I have to review it just to make sure that they uh, you know, cross their Ts and dotted their Is. I said that right? And uh, uh, you know, we should be able to go out to bid again, uh, you know, within the next couple of days. Um, yeah, you know, just to kind of add on to it, what what Rob said. I, you know, I think the the biggest issue, which you probably noted, was we we didn't get a very good response to it. And there was, there was a couple of factors when that, one of them is it went out right around the holidays. I think it went out in mid-December and it came back in mid-January. It was like, I think it was a week after I started. Um, so we only had three bidders. And again, two of the bidders were not not had no experience. And then the the third bidder missed bid. So, uh, what we looked at, what we, what we spent this time doing is uh, refining. I I talked to a couple of um, of of uh, contractors who took bids out, who actually downloaded the documents but didn't bid. And Tectonic did the same, uh, our engineering consultant. And, you know, we we refined the the drawings to sort of uh, remove a little bit of the risk and unknowns from uh, the drawings. And obviously, you know, bidding out now, we're in a little bit of a better uh, position to get better. Obviously, you know, bidding out now, we're in a little bit of a better uh position to get better bids. So uh I'm expecting to get a better response this time and I'm gonna reach out to the people who download the bids and other contractors just to get a better, better response, hopefully we'll get a good uh, good response this time.
Hey, do you have an estimate of the timeline from here on out, now that we have the bid packages, they're going out in a couple of days?
So.
And what is the timeline then to um for responses?
I'll I'll walk you, I'll walk you through it. So assuming we get the bids back in, let's just say, you know, four to five weeks, we get, we have our 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 uh our due date. Um you know, it would take a week to 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 review the bids and make sure that whoever our low bidder is, is qualified. And then we have to go through the contract phase, get uh insurances, and then the board would approve that selected low bidder or lowest responsible bidder. Um from then, uh the the biggest, the biggest sort of time factor is the actual bridges themselves. So the the bridges are, it's actually three sections of prefabricated bridge, prefabricated bridge section. So whereas the current bridge, I don't know if anybody looked at it, it's on, they're on very individual piles, so every couple of feet, there's a set of wood piles um that the bridge is built on. This is gonna be a little bit different, it's gonna have um sec- actually a section of, sections of bridges that are dropped on individual pile caps. So um these are manufactured by uh manufacturers that are hours away. So these these are gonna get delivered on, you know, these bridge sections are gonna get delivered on uh on uh tractor trailers in the the middle of the night. Um so the, when we initially went out to bid, and I I think one of, this is one of our um our lessons learned from this is the uh, the lead time was between six and eight months to actually receive the bridge sections. You know, I do think that it'll be a little bit um quicker this time, just because contractors have been slower. So I think the timing is a little bit better for for actually constructing these uh these bridge sections. That's really the the largest question mark with respect to time now. The duck pond bridge is also a part of this as well, um that's gonna get done in a in a much quicker rate. Basically, you know, we have the the contract set up, so the duck pond bridge gets done first. And then the uh the the actual pedestrian bridge, the the longer span doesn't get demolished until we have confirmation that the uh bridge sections are are imminently being delivered. So um you know, total time, we're probably looking at replacing the bridge sections in the summer of next year. The large, the large span, the duck pond bridge, I I hope to be done this year. Uh you know, sometime in the late fall or even, you know, early winter, um have the duck pond bridge replaced. But again, this, the the fabrication time, if it is that six to eight months, it could be the, it could be the summer of next year.
Okay, all right, thank you, Jeff.
Jeff, how long do you expect to have the bid out?
Uh four weeks, we we might go to five weeks just to give contract. It's a, it's a, it's, it can be a complicated bid, there's a lot of moving parts. Um you know, a lot of it is, they have to contact their pre- prefab, the the manufacturers of the bridge section. So you know, they could be, if they're waiting two weeks to get a price for that, you know, there's a, um and also the part of the project requires a t- actually a temporary platform being built to install the piles for the, for the bridge sections to sit on. So um that was one of the, one of the um the question marks is installing these piles. So that's one of the things that we're we refine in the design to sort of remove some of the question mark with how those get installed. Uh so there's, there's, it's a little bit complicated to 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 put a bid package together for contractors. So we we might go to five weeks or six weeks. Um you know, my biggest thing is, I would rather take a little bit longer and do it, get it done the right way. Again, you know, we, you know, we threw out two bidders last time because the last thing I wanna do is we had this visible bridge and it doesn't go smoothly. So my my main focus is, even if it takes a little longer, let's get it done right, do it once by somebody who's qualified and uh not think about it again.
Yeah, okay. All right, that's the best we can do.
We're trying, it's it's on.
At this point, yeah, it's very hard to predict the timeline, but um thank you for giving us that idea, you know, a a general, a general sense.
Yeah. Yeah, just to give you, just to give you an idea, when Tectonic initially reached out, that they were doing their homework on these bridge sections. They were originally told six to eight weeks, six to eight weeks to fabricate them. And then when the bids went out and they came back to us, we were told six to eight months. Um they also came in, I think, twice as expensive, they were assuming uh I think they were assuming s- five or six hundred thousand dollars for the bridge sections and the 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 two bids we got, two of the bids were like a million or a little over a million for the three bridge sections. Again, I'm hoping we'll get a little bit of a better response, just because things have slowed down a little bit in the industry, just in general.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Uh let's see. Okay, and now I'm going to give a a brief update to the ConEd rate case. Um we've heard from our special counsel, um you know, for anyone who hasn't been uh paying attention to this, we have a consortium of of about forty municipalities, I've lost track now, more keep keep coming on, uh to represent Westchester in ConEd's rate increase request. This is the first time Westchester has been represented in a case like this. Um what our counsel said to us in his update is, this is now a case like no other. We have a very united and strong voice. Um the current developments are that, so the parties have been in discussion of the issues and we have now been in the third round of offers and counteroffers. Um so there was a session between the Westchester interveners, that's us, and the PSC staff where um our counsel expressed continued, you know, dissatisfaction with the level of increases being proposed by ConEd. Um they make concessions, but the concessions don't seem to be taking the issues of affordability seriously enough. Um and because of, because of that, the PSC staff, a negotiating team changed course. They sent a message to ConEd saying they were unable to continue presenting those offers um due to concerns of the impact on affordability from a three-year agreement. And so they they would stop, and it's not clear what the next steps are going to be, but ConEd's response was that there should not be any more settlement meetings at this time. So what can happen next is, you know, there are a range of possibilities. Um the settlement talks can continue if the PSC staff gets an internal agreement on a reasonable offer from ConEd. I'm not sure if they would push ConEd to then um offer whatever they determine to be reasonable. Or ConEd can itself uh present what they deem a more reasonable offer. And the other alternative is that the settlement talks can stop and we go into full litigation. Um if we go into full litigation, the PSC would then hear from the parties and then determine what the increase would be for a one-year period. Then ConEd would be free to present another proposal in two thousand twenty, twenty twenty-seven. Um the factors that the interveners talked about were that the increases were still, even if the counter proposals and proposals, the increase were still far above the rate of inflation. That there is a lack of equity in the capital investment and the and the fairness in the rate structure. The cost of serving the underground grid, which is mostly New York City, New York City has underground, except for Staten Island. And we of course have a an above-ground system. So the the rate of, the cost of serving the underground grid is far higher than the rate of service for us with the overhead system. In addition, approximately ninety-five percent of the proposed capital improvements are going to New York City. And then, in addition to that, let's see, there are another five, no. And in addition to that, we're paying the same rate as the New York City residents. So we are subsidizing in a considerable fashion what New York City residents are are getting in terms of service and in terms of capital improvements. So we've proposed a study to determine the cost of service differential and then to remove that subsidy paid by Westchester residents. So those were some of the factors that our um special counsel and Westchester, other Westchester interveners presented to the PSC, which which led to their um sort of halt in presenting ConEd's offers. So we'll see what happens next. I hope that we get a a reasonable proposal from ConEd rather than go to litigation. But I suppose we're prepared, our side is prepared to go to litigation if it's necessary. Any questions from anyone?
Oh, and we don't have our counsel here, but there's been co- times in the past where we've discussed double poll legislation to really make sure that ConEd isn't as accountable to the people and the communities that it serves. And that brought them here and their lawyers here out of fear that if one community does this, then two, then four, then eight. And maybe that's something to consider to make this a more even playing field and to get the communities and get the monies back that they need to make sure that the infrastructure is safe and secure uh at the cost to ConEdison. And maybe that would bring them to the table, and it'd be interesting what counsel for these joint communities might think of that approach.
I mean, it's not ju- it wouldn't just be an incentive, but they really need to address these polls, I mean, this is a real thing.
I I I I understand that, but they they push back on it and they usually will come when you bring up the issue and they'll come and they'll pick some of the polls.
Okay.
But I would imagine in communities across Westchester that are getting hit with um unprecedented storms and damaging to poles and they just tack them up to each other, uh that maybe that's an approach to consider to ensure the safety of our respective and collective communities. Um um I uh unfortunately, I think ConEdison only care about their pocketbook at the, and their bank account at the end of the day. And that may be a means to do so, even if the means is really just to ensure safety and security.
Yeah, I I will bring that up, thank you for uh reminding all of us of this issue. Okay, all right, so we're ready to move on. Rob, do you wanna go through the administrative items?
Sure, uh quite a few administrative items tonight. We have two retroactive payment claims for checks dated August twenty-second and September fourth. Uh we have a street opening uh permit bond release for fifty-two Hidden Hollow. We have the authorization to utilize town property for the Chappaqua Fire Department. Uh that's for their open house on October fifth. With the construction going on on their property, they're unable to use it. So they're asking to use the train station parking lot for that, and that's a someday, I believe. Um really, the authorization to approve the annual service and support contract with DNR, uh ten thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. DNR is the uh vendor that installed all the electronics in this room, uh the TVs, the cameras, et cetera, as well as all the electronics at uh the Chappaqua Performing Arts Center. So we have an annual contract with them to keep everything running. Um we have the authorization to approve the revised snow and ice agreements with New York State DOT. Uh that's through twenty twenty-nine. Um that changed, it was a revised agreement uh in in our favor. It had been sixty-eight thousand a year, it's now up to seventy-nine thousand a year. And that's for about twenty-two miles of New York State roadway in the town that we actually plow uh the snow for. Uh so we don't do all of the state roads in town, but for a lot of the state roads, we uh we remove the snow. Uh we have the authorization to purchase water maintenance materials for DPW from uh Rio Supply for nineteen thousand two fifty-seven. Uh we have the authorization uh for the acceptance of the second amendment, an extension to the uh agreement with Veolia, the company that operates the water treatment plant. Um what this change in this contract allows is uh it will allow Veolia to purchase equipment on our behalf. Currently, they're not permitted to do that, they're the operator of the plant. We typically uh purchase all the equipment that we put there. There's a particular piece of equipment that they're looking to purchase that they can get easier uh through their own sources and uh this amendment to the contract will allow for that to happen. Uh we have the authorization to attend the New York Highway Safety Symposium for two police officers, Officers Mitchell and Donovan. Uh total cost of one thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars. Uh we have the authorization to award the bid for after-school bus transportation services. Uh that's for Chappaqua Transportation, uh that's uh taking the kids from the schools to the after-school programs that the town runs. Uh we have the authorization to refund a building permit number two one seven four nine. It was a duplicate payment on that permit and we're refunding that. We have the authorization for change order number two to Rivertown Solar. Um so when Asher was mentioning the high electric bills over at the Chappaqua Performing Arts Center, this is a change order, uh probably, I think, the last step to get the uh solar panels online. Uh they've been installed, uh I understand they're operational, what this has to do with this CAT six cable. The wifi there wasn't strong enough to communicate with the panels that it needed to, I guess, uh whatever the communication has to be between the the panels in the in the grid.
It's for testing and reporting.
Great, so uh four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, uh but that should be online soon, so.
Right.
Uh we're hoping, uh should reduce the cost significantly of the electricity out there. Uh we have the authorization to approve change order number three for U- Upper Minkle Dam decommissioning uh for Tectonic, a hundred and twenty-five thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. Uh the board's pretty familiar with this project. Uh we found out earlier this year that when the uh Army Corps of Engineers brought their comments back to the original design that we had, they changed it substantially. And uh this is a change order for Tectonic to redesign this. Uh we're expecting to have the revised design in uh, I think by the end of October, early November, so we can uh move forward with this project. It's been delayed due to DEC and Army Corps uh review permitting requirements. Uh we have the authorization to use the Omni Partners bid pricing for two uh IT projects. Uh twenty-nine thousand four hundred is for a computer hardware refresh, refresh. We're replacing twenty or so, give or take, machines uh around Town Hall. Uh this is an anticipated cost, we have a useful life of about six years on each machine. So our IT vendor logically reviews that with us annually and they've recommended that these machines be replaced. Uh they also recommend replacing a network switch at Town Hall for forty-three thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars. Those are uh, there's an IT capital project from the last time that we borrowed with funding still available and uh we will access that funding for those projects. Uh we have the consent and release for the sewer connection work at seventy-three South Greeley Avenue. And uh finally, we have the authorization to award the purchase of masonry repair for the Parks and Recycling Garage. The amount is fifty-three thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Thank you, Rob. Um may I have a motion to adjourn the work session and enter into the town board meeting?
Go on.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Okay, we're now at our town board meeting. Um Rob, do you have any announcements?
Uh we have the tax bills, do you wanna?
Oh, sure.
School tax bills.
Yes, the school tax bills have been mailed, so if you as opposed to your bank are responsible to pay the taxes and have not received a bill, please contact the tax office and we will send out a bill to you. They are due no later than April, I'm sorry, September.
September.
Yes, and you can email us at taxes at mynewcastleny.gov or call us at two three eight four seven seven three.
Okay, thank you, very important information.
Yes.
Don't be late, there's a ten percent.
Don't be late.
Two percent this month, it's ten percent in January.
Yep.
That's two percent this month?
Yeah.
Well, it's free money.
There you go.
Jeremy's taking care of it.
Let the slippery slope get comfortable, January's ten percent.
They're gonna get in trouble.
Supervisor's right, it's painful.
You know what, I'm gonna hold my supervisor's report because it's it's getting late, it'll be in my newsletter.
Sure.
Rob, do you have any um, Jeff, a report?
Yeah, I just have a couple of uh items for my report. So the road paving uh continued last week. Our paving contractor has been in and out of town this summer uh based on just uh different commitments that they have. Uh we're hoping they'll finish up within the next two weeks. Uh and then if you've driven on one seventeen recently, you've noticed ConEd's out there doing some, I think it's gas main replacements. Uh so they are gonna be there, uh I I had it incorrectly listed in the uh newsletter. The dates were in August and I'm not sure how I did that, but they will be there at least another month and possibly two. So um they're gonna go all the way to Northway from where they are, they're going down to Northway. Uh that's where that project will terminate, um.
Did they initially plan to start when they did, uh two weeks before school started?
I I don't think so, uh we we.
This has nothing to do with double poll legislation, but maybe they need some more incentives to be better.
And and. And and I I'm not sure why the timing got to be the way it was when they consult with town staff and we try to do our paving, we didn't get done this year before school, we usually do as well. Um so we usually recommend that anybody doing work, um if they're doing tree cutting or whatever, that we try to when the buses are not on the roads and the, you know, during the summer, the roads are less congested in town. So um not sure why they chose that timing. Bark tells me it's a prob- I see, probably uh a month to two months, depending. You're not sure how much rock they're gonna hit uh in the project and that could slow it down a little bit. So um I don't think they're not doing any uh full road closures. They're leaving one lane open the whole time, but it is a little congested. So if you can avoid the area, I would avoid it there.
Yeah, I live right there and I I was wondering why they waited so long to start.
Me too.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah. That's all.
Okay, all right. Um we're now at the public comment period. Uh public comment and new business. Anyone um in the audience with a public comment?
I actually, um Asher forgot to hand these out. He had some cards for you regarding the program. He asked if I could do that for you.
Okay. Very.
So impressed.
My child, Sabrina, he's good.
So impressed.
This is great.
You all with two?
No, I thought Asher's.
Um please, uh when you make a public comment, please identify yourself and your place of residence.
Sure, uh my name is Eric Dorsh. I live on Aldridge Road up the hill here. Um I just wanted to say that I thought Asher's um proposal to put up um in a window of a of a shop or a a vendor in town similarly to a re- a restaurant grade or a lead certification of a building or something, the stormwater uh pla- uh sheet that the certification or identifying the 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 work and and thought and um commitment to that effort. I thought it was a a good idea to make that visible for people to see and enforce the message and the collective effort. So thought that was interesting.
Yeah, I agree. It's a fantastic idea.
Thank you.
Um is there anyone online for public comment? No hands are raised. Okay, so we will close the public comment period and uh we will open a public hearing now on um the extension of a moratorium on battery, on the battery energy storage system and commercial solar arrays. Uh may I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um Rob, do you wanna talk about the need or Sabrina?
Yes, Sabrina's here. Sabrina can speak to it.
Talk about the need for the extension?
Sure. Um our, it's a combined public hearing for two moratoriums that the town had issued regarding the battery, large-scale battery energy storage systems and large-scale solar. Um we've been working on drafting legislation uh for both uh between myself, my office, uh different people in my office and the town attorney. And we've come up with a couple drafts, but we keep changing them due to what's going around on with our neighboring municipalities and decisions they're making. Um so we're we're kind of still trying to get something on paper for you to review and move forward.
Right, right. We have, the situation is changing around us, so.
It it's a moving target.
So we we want to do the best job we possibly can. So, okay, so since this is a, is there anything else? I mean, I I think that says says it all.
Right, I think this is a six-month extension, correct?
Yes.
Right, so uh well, we have one person in the audience. Any um any comments for this public hearing? Sorry, I don't mean to.
But you don't have to.
You don't have to.
There's nobody else, so.
You're in?
You don't have to.
No, um no, I'm curious actually uh where where the the solar and the the large-scale battery storage may have been proposed or.
We haven't.
They haven't.
It's not proposed.
Not.
It it's not proposed, it's.
Preemptive, pro- proactively.
Preemptive, right.
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
There's no proposal yet, and so that's why we want to establish rules and regulations for when that does come about.
Be in front of it.
Right, that sounds great.
To be proactive, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Um are any hands raised online for this public hearing?
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised.
And worry not, Asher is finding locations in town.
We need to get, we need to get Asher back. Um so since uh seeing that there are no, well, there was one question, but seeing that there is no one else raising a question on this, I would propose that we um close the public hearing but keep the record open um for written written comments through this Friday, what is the date of this Friday? Through the twelfth, Friday the twelfth at noon, which is what we do customarily. Um does that sit well with everyone?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Uh so may I have a a motion to do so, please?
So so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. So Rob, you've gone over all of the matters that are listed on the consent agenda.
Well, I thought I did, but in looking at the consent agenda, I missed one item and that was the uh authorization to award uh Department of Judas the uh design contract.
Right.
So we spoke about that and uh but it wasn't in the administrative items. So uh all the other items we discussed in in admin.
That's why we were.
But uh that one and uh the uh council approved that and gave us uh the wording that that would be subject to uh an agreement between uh, subject to uh the contract that would be agreeable to the town and its council. What's the wording?
Good night, folks.
Good night, Sabrina. Um.
Good night, Sabrina.
Good night, Sabrina.
So I don't have to redo the whole thing. Oh, we do have the master plan, master.
The airport.
Airport master plan in the consent agenda, okay.
Oh, it's in the consent.
All right, so let's go ahead. Let's see, Holly, do you wanna get us started with the resolutions?
Have what?
Um it's in the consent agenda.
Oh, it's number nine.
Oh, it's in the consent agenda.
Yeah, all right, go ahead, Holly.
Um I moved to adopt items one through sixteen is listed on the consent agenda. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, so I moved to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of one million three hundred and four thousand three dollars and thirty-five cents listed on the summary A P check register and detail voucher detail report. Both dated August twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Friday, August twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ali, go ahead.
Um I moved retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of five hundred twenty-two thousand dollar uh eight hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty cents listed on the summary A P check register and detail voucher detail report, both dated September fourth, twenty twenty-five. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Thursday, September fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move to approve the change in the rate of pay for Alex Lang from twenty dollars to twenty-five dollars per hour for flag football effective September second, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move to authorize the hiring of the following individuals, position of recreation attendant at the Recreation and Parks Department at the corresponding rates and dates as indicated below.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I move to authorize the appointment of Angelo Gianota, pardon me if I said your name incorrectly, as a member of the L G B T Q plus committee for a two-year term effective September tenth, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
One more then?
I move to award bid contract D P W twenty twenty-five oh five, purchase of masonry repair to the Parks Recycling Garage building to S N P Consultants, Inc. for the total amount of fifty-three thousand one hundred sixty-five dollars.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Want to move to adjourn?
Well, do you have to, are you gonna go through the resolutions?
We do the.
These additional.
Um this, we we passed this resolution. This was the airport resolution. It was in the consent agenda, item nine. This.
Yes.
We did pass it. Oh, it's included in the consent? Okay, it was. All right, my apology.
Well, yeah, but thank you anyway. You never know. Okay, may I have a a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.